And I won't. I'll sign it.
Okay.
Evening, and welcome to this meeting of Troy City Council. I'm William Lutz, President of Council. We will begin tonight's meeting with the invocation of a pledge of allegiance given by Mr. Allen. Please rise and remove your hats.
Lord, as we hold our council meeting this evening and looking forward to our next four years, please give us the strength to realize that our hometown can remain a beautiful community by simply choosing to respect one another and working together as Trojans always have. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Schilling? Mr. Allen?
Present.
Mrs. Snee?
Here.
Mr. Rozell?
Here.
Mr. Seaver?
Present.
Mr. Twilliger?
Here.
Mr. Swizer?
Here.
Mr. Twist?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here. Motion to excuse Mr. Schilling.
Second.
It's been moved to excuse Mr. Schilling by Mr. Phillips, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling is excused.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, would you please read a summary of the minutes of the July 4th, 2021, meeting of Troy City Council?
Minutes of Council, January 4, 2021. Committee reports, Community and Economic Development Committee reported that committee recommends legislation be prepared to approve the revised final record plan of Troy Christian Schools Plan Development. Community Partnerships Committee recommended that legislation be prepared to establish a PACE program, including an ESID, and approve the application for 224-226 South Market Street. Finance Committee recommended legislation be prepared to approve a subordination loan agreement with Greenville Federal Bank. Mortgage Committee reported on the notices of liquid license transfers. Resolution number R1, 2021, declaring a necessity regarding the PACE program was given first reading and adopted. Resolution number R2, 2021, permitting the use of Internet auction sites to dispose of public property was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O1, 2021, loving special assessments related to the PACE program at 224-226 South Market Street location, first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O2, 2021, determining to proceed with the acquisition of certain property related to, again, the PACE program, 224-226 South Market Street, was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O3, 2021, approving final revised record plan for the plan development of Troy Christian was given first reading and adopted. Ordinance number O4, 2021, so an ordinance subordinating a mortgage lien for R and E LLC was given first reading and was adopted. Ordinance number O5, 2021, final acceptance of the Ferryman-Cover Annexation, 3.714 acres, first reading and adopted. Following comments, Council adjourn to 7:23 PM.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. House Counsel, wish to act?
I would accept.
Second.
It's been moved to accept minutes by Mr. Rozell and seconded by Mr. Twist. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We have three committee reports. We will begin with the Finance Committee and Mr. Swizer.
Yes, sir. We have one report tonight. On January 11th, this committee met to consider recommending the subordination of an existing loan from the Small Business Development revolving Loan Fund, SBD, for Keystone Real Estate Group LLC. This would permit the company to have a new commercial lender. No additional city funds are requested. This committee recommends that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety to execute a subordination loan agreement for Keystone Real Estate Group LLC, so that the subordination process can be completed as soon as possible. The committee supports emergency legislation, and this is respectfully submitted by Mr. Phillips, Mr. Seaver, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Swizer. Are there any comments or questions on the reports from the Finance Committee? Seeing none, we will move to Mr. Phillips and the Streets and Cyklax Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. On January 11th, the committee members Snee and I met to consider recommending a safety study along West Main Street from Maryville Drive to I-75 northbound ramps. The safety study agreement includes the consultant assisting the city with a safety funding application to ODOTs related to the improvement of Stanfield Road North to and through the intersection with Experiment Farm Road. It is the recommendation that legislation be prepared, authorizing the Director of Public Services and Safety to enter into a professional services agreement with the firm of American Structure Point, Inc., at a cost not to exceed $55,000 for a traffic study along West Main Street from Maryville Drive to the I-75 northbound ramps, and assisting with an associated funding application. And this is respectfully submitted by Mrs. Snee, Mr. Schilling, and myself as chair.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Do council members have any comments or questions on the report? Our final report this evening is an oral report from the Personnel Committee and Mr. Twist.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to move that council's appointment to the ESID Board, which is the Energy Special Improvements District Board, to be City Auditor John Friggy.
I'll second that.
There's been moved to appoint Mr. Friggy to the ESID Board, seconded by Mrs. Snee. Any comments or questions? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. We go to the Citizen Comments on Committee Reports section of the agenda. If you have any comments on items Resolution R3, 2021, or Ordinance O6, 2021, you're invited to come up to the podium, give your name and address, and you have two minutes to address Council on either of those items. Seeing no one, we'll move into resolutions. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Resolution R3, 2021?
Resolution number R3, 2021, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service and Safety of the City of Troy, Ohio, to enter into an agreement for professional services with American Structure Point, Inc., to provide a safety study, including a grant funding application regarding the area of West Main Street from Maryville Drive to the Interstate 75 northbound ramps, cost not exceed $55,000, first reading.
House Counsel, wish to act on the item?
With a suspend.
Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Swizer, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the resolution by Mr. Swizer, seconded by Mr. Twilliger. Are there any final comments or questions from council members on the item? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Resolution is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, will you please read Ordinance O6, 2021?
Ordinance number O6, 2021, ordinance subordinating a mortgage lien for Keystone Real Estate Group LLC and declaring an emergency. This provides the company the ability to change commercial lenders. No additional city funds are involved, first reading.
House Counsel, wish to act?
Move to suspend. Second.
It's been moved to suspend the three reading rule by Mr. Twist, seconded by Mr. Phillips. Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Does it behave work? I mean, you can't hear me, please.
Okay, we'll speak louder.
Thank you.
Mrs. Knight, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Moved to adopt.
Second.
The three reading rule has been suspended. It has been moved to adopt the ordinance by Mr. Swizer, seconded by Mr. Seaver. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Mrs. Knight, please call the roll.
Mr. Twist?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mrs. Snee?
Yes.
Mr. Rozell?
Yes.
Mr. Seaver?
Yes.
Mr. Twilliger?
Yes.
Mr. Swizer?
Yes.
Ordinance is adopted.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Mrs. Knight, are there any communications or announcements?
Just two. One, council received a form from the U.S. Census Bureau thanking them for their city's participation in the 2020 census, and it is time that I remind you of your filing of the annual financial statements from the state.
Thank you, Mrs. Knight. Moving on to comments from elected officials. Mayor Oda.
I have no comments tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Titterington, Director of Public Service and Safety.
Nothing this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Titterington. Law Director, Mr. Kerber.
Those are...
Thank you. The auditor is absent. I know Mr. Seaver has an announcement that he'd like to make.
I would. Council, before you today was a annual report. It's the first one from the reinstated Human Relations Commission, which I have the pleasure of serving on it to bequest of the mayor. We've had 25 meetings with speakers from the schools, the cities, the police, the fire, Hanegraf, Hobart, Clopay, the Board of Elections, community members, and concerned citizens. You'll find 11 goals and initiatives that have been compiled to be transmitted to council for their review. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to thank the mayor, council, staffs, especially Patrick and Salome, and my fellow members of the commission. We look forward to implementing and continuing the progress next year. So thank you all.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Seaver. Do any other council members have any announcements or anything that they'd like to speak at this time? Seeing none, are there any staff members in the audience who wish to speak at this time? We now open up the meeting for public comments. Please come to the podium, give your full name and address, and take as much time as you can soon. Please keep your comments respectful of everyone around this table and others in the room.
Thank you for providing the opportunity to provide public comments.
Give your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. My name's Kathy Carranza. I live at 210 Kaiser Lane in Troy. I've been a resident in Miami County my whole life, and I've lived and worked in Troy for the past 13 years. I come today to express my support for Mayor Oda, as I have courage there making an effort to recall her in the near future for what some may perceive to be a mishandling of COVID-19 pandemic. However, I stand behind her and would like to express my gratitude for her leadership over the past year. As an individual with a medical exemption from my doctor and on fire with file with the Miami County Health Department and grateful that Mayor Oda and all of Troy small businesses who have also posted the same mask sign on their door are willing to welcome me in. In addition to being a mom to my two daughters, I also work as a waitress at Lincoln Square. I work without a mask, and although the vast majority of our customers take no issue with that, I am bullied by others on a weekly basis. One customer cringed and quite literally jumped back into her booth at the side of my unmasked face. Another just a few days ago asked why I don't wear a mask. I explained my condition to her. She then told me that she's sorry about my condition, but she really wishes I didn't have it so that I could wear a mask to protect her. These are just a few examples. The worst words come anonymously in the form of the health permanent complaints, which we are able to read when we receive them. I work with another woman who has multiple lung and esophageal diseases and another with a medical dimension who chooses to wear a mask anyway, so she doesn't have to deal with the harsh words and questions from the public. Because of this, simply going about my day, my day-to-day life can be anxiety inducing. I always worry someone who is offended by my near existence will confront me angrily or even violently at the grocery store or wherever else I may go. I appreciate that the mayor recognizes that people like me exist and are allowed to enter a city building without having to wear a device that impairs my ability to breathe, as described and documented by my doctors. Secondly, it is my opinion that the sign that has offended some of my fellow Troy citizens is not political in any form. Too often during this pandemic, we have been given messages and instructions from Governor DeWine that have come wrapped in fear. We were sold on hospital surges that never came. We were told two weeks to flatten the curve. We were even given a mask mandate originally that was rescinded in less than 24 hours just to be implemented again just weeks later. Mayor Oda, by posting the sign-in question, was helping to provide full and accurate information to the public. The fact of the matter is, no matter what your opinion on masks or whether you believe there's evidence for or against effectiveness, the mask mandate, which is not a law, allows for medical and religious exemptions, period. Too often, I run into and speak to people who don't even know that children 10 years and under are exempt from wearing a mask. Generally, citizens just read the headline, "Here, masks are mandatory," and don't bother to even understand the exemptions. That exemption is purposefully written into the mandate. Governor DeWine has even addressed this multiple times with frustration during his press conferences. He has told the citizens of Ohio that they should assume people without masks have medical or religious exemptions and to leave them alone. But because of the divisiveness this election year, masks have become another thing to have a political opinion about. Finally, I must remind you that masks are not intended to be a substitute for social distancing, as we have been repeatedly told by Governor DeWine and various state of Ohio Health Department figureheads. Though I haven't been to City Hall recently, I assume there is ample room for social distancing indoors, as there has ever only been one or two other people in the building any time I've ever been there. Unless this is the day before tax day, then the lobbyist will, I know because I always wait until the day before to find my answer. Meanwhile, I haven't had as much as a sniffle since last January, and now we know that asymptomatic spread accounted for exactly zero cases of COVID among a screening of 10 million people, according to a December 1st, 2020 article in the British Medical Journal, of which I'm happy to provide copy to all of you. We also need not worry about mask compliance. The Bureau of Workers' Compensation Mask Compliance Task Force has repeatedly found that 94% to 99% of citizens in public are wearing masks. Almost every time I go anywhere, I'm the only person without a mask in the entire building, except for today. And all of this goes without saying, the vast majority of spread is coming from small intimate gatherings in the home among friends and family members and not in public places like the grocery store or City Hall. I wonder if the constituents who complain to you council members, wear masks in their own home around their own friends and family, what actually matters? I hope that we can look beyond whatever our political and emotional opinions are about this virus and understand that there are exemptions. I for one appreciate that the mayor is comfortable bringing this to light, and I urge council members to look objectively at what the sign actually says without political or emotional bias, and consider that a recall of Mayor Oda would only further divide us at a time when we should all be working together to understand this virus and be more compassionate toward one another. Thank you.
Hard to follow that one. My name is Brian Keffer, 412 West Canal Street. I'm also medically exempt. I have a doctor's note on file with Miami County Health Department. Even with that, I have gone into stores here in Troy. I went into Habitat for Humanity, where the manager cursed me out, told me I was a baby killer, started cursing in front of other children, called the Troy Police Department, and tried to have me arrested. When I calmly explained to them, "I'm medically exempt. I just wanted to come by a table. That's it." I work at Moeller Brew Barn a couple nights a week, where I also face complaints and people that don't want me around them. I wear a button that says I'm mask exempt, so they know that I'm mask exempt. The three employees there that are all wear that button. I have seen this talked about and people saying that I'm putting other people at risk and I'm doing all of this, but I'm not hearing any of those people talk about mental health issues. And all the kids that are ending up back on drugs or that are thinking about suicide because they're isolated from their families, grandparents who can't see their children and their grandchildren, and people are dying because of these rules. And I think it's more dangerous, to be honest, when there's a 99% survival rate from COVID-19.
Let's start talking about mental health issues. Let's start talking about drug use. Let's start talking about grandparents who haven't seen their grandchildren and grandchildren who haven't seen their grandparents and did get to have family Thanksgiving and family Christmas because they're so scared. I have a medical exemption. I grew up and passed out the first time I tried to wear a mask, the first day I worked at Moeller, when this all started. I am not going to put myself through that, and I'm not going to do that. And I'm not going to sit there and walk into a store. I went into a restaurant today where just a hostess was telling me she has to take my temperature. She's not a nurse. She's not a doctor, and she doesn't have a right to do that. Mayor Oda, I have disagreed with you on a couple things, but I'm behind you 100%.
I'm Dave Dessert, 512, Canal Street, Troy, Ohio. Hello, fellow Americans. It's good to see this island of sanity in a sea of madness. These people that want me to feed their psychosis, their mass hysteria. This lady shouldn't be mayor. She should be governor. Several years ago, my first wife passed away from cancer after a four-year battle. She was on chemo seven different times. We didn't ask the state of Ohio to get a mask and help us. A half a million Americans are going to die of cancer this year. We don't ask everybody to run and hide. I got lucky and met another great girl and got married. When she was younger, she got raped. They put a pillowcase over her head and raped her, and she has a real fear of wearing a mask. I mean, the anxiety is huge. She just, heart rate goes nuts. She really struggles with it. And, you know, I'm her husband, and I'm not going to wear a mask. I'm going to support my wife. I'm not going to feed your psychosis. The fear and the restrictions are killing people. They can't get in their medical appointments or they're just too scared to go.
Never in my life did I think I would be coming and speaking in front of a city council meeting, let alone all of these people. I'm not an eloquent speaker, so forgive me if I'm not as eloquent as the people that go before me. First, I just want to say that Mayor Oda, I am so proud that you are my mayor. I stand behind you 100%. This woman is... I've had the honor of getting to know her the past few months. She is kind. She is full of character. She is loving. And her job is to represent the people in her town, and that is what she has done. I know that there is a group that is trying to recall her. I've seen their Facebook posts, and they are nasty and they are hateful. And it speaks more of them than it does of Mayor Oda. I also know there is a lot of debate about this sign that Mayor Oda posted on the city building. I don't know if you know, I own a business here in Troy. I have the same sign on my door. I love the sign, and I stand behind everything that the sign says. It is not anti-mask. It is simply allowing for exemptions, which Governor DeWine does allow in his mandate, so there is nothing wrong with the sign. I realized that the state of Ohio logo was on the bottom. In no way did I mean to falsify a document, so I took it down, only for that reason, and put up another sign. I know that Mayor Oda did not mean to falsify a document and manipulate people, and here's how I know that. I saw Facebook posts about someone claiming and wrote into the city and wrote into the Public Health Department that Mayor Oda made this sign on purpose to confuse people, to falsify the state of Ohio. Here's how I know that's not true. I was at a meeting with Mayor Oda in November, I believe, with other business meetings, business owners. I called the meeting. There was about 20 business owners that showed up, and I invited Mayor Oda to come because we were concerned about these mandates that DeWine put down. We were concerned about our doors getting shut down, and we're going to refuse to shut our doors if he tries to mandate that again. The sign was read to us in that meeting. None of us had heard of that sign before until that meeting, and we fell in love with it because it's so true, and it is kind, and it is loving, and it represents everyone in her community. Wear a mask or don't wear a mask. You have exemptions not to wear one. Robin, Mayor Oda, thank you. Thank you for being you. I think you should run for governor.
My name is Linda McCowen. I live at 737 Shaftesbury Road here in Troy, Ohio. I just moved to this town, and I am proud to say I live here now because that mayor's sitting right there. I have never done anything like this, but I think I need to introduce you all to this book. It's called The Doctrine of the Lesser Magistrates. That's every one of you right there, and I don't think you understand what your duty is. I'm going to read to you from chapter four, the last two paragraphs, and then I'm going to leave this book here for you all to read, so you can understand that you have a duty and a responsibility to all of us in this town. All of us in this room. This is what chapter four says. The primary duty of the lesser magistrates regarding the doctrine of the lesser magistrates is threefold. First, they are to oppose and resist any laws or edits from this higher authority that contravene the law or the word of God. Second, they are to protect the person, liberty, and property of those who reside within the jurisdiction from any unjust and immoral laws or action by higher authority. Third, they are not to implement any laws or decrees made by the higher authority that violate the Constitution, and if necessary, resist them. They cannot hide behind the excuse, "I'm just doing my job," or "I'm just following the law of the land," as an attempt to escape their duty. The duty of the lesser magistrate is to uphold that which is right in the sight of God and to protect the people where his local authority or function resides. This is a sacred duty. We define it as a sacred because it's founded in the scripture and proceeds from God. And I will leave this book here so you all can be educated into what you owe us as your community.
Hello, everybody. I think everybody can hear me. So I'm Juan Fernandez. I reside at 4313 McCandless Road, Troy, Ohio, and I did visit this meeting back when the heats of the racial injustice and all that stuff, of course, as a counterwar nobody wants to open, and I want to just say that, you know, reiterate something that I said before. I feel as though Troy is very welcoming to definitely all sorts of people. As an immigrant or implant to Troy, I felt nothing more than just a welcoming door into this community as a healthcare practitioner, and I want to say in the transcendence of all this crazy, unprecedented time, and I want to just make sure everybody realizes, we've never done this before. We never fought a global pandemic, right? So all of us in our community are doing the very best we can with what we have. So I do understand that some people may not agree with all the policies, et cetera, out there, but I do agree with people that spoke before me that there are exemptions we must obviously, you know, be aware of, number one. Number two, recognize. I am one of those people that is exempt, and for me, it's simple. I've been to combat three times with the United States Army. I've got a few people back here that I recognize in the crowd, so thank you so much for those of you, sir, but nonetheless, and those of you who support service members, but because of being in combat, being attacked, PTSD, which I've been getting counseling for for the past almost three years, my counselor, Phoezoe, who's a medical professional, that I should not wear a mask, right? I've been asked numerous times, and I offer my letter, which I carry with me at all times, right? So I do understand... So I do understand, um, you know, our, our fellow people that are exempt. Just make sure you carry whatever it is that you need to carry, so you can actually defend yourself if you need to. But nonetheless, the reality is this, um, I just want us to remember that it's all about grace. Us assuming that somebody is doing something else onto someone else out of malice and actual mischief is wrong. And if that's where your heart is, you need to be looking beyond the mask because you have deeper issues. So I stand before you guys. I know you probably haven't gotten it all right. Anybody that's done all, everything right in your life, raise your hand. Nobody has, right? Nobody has. You guys are doing the best you could with what you have. And I'm thankful to be residing in this community right now in this time. Because I have seen on TV, and I've gotten reports from family members and friends that reside elsewhere that are dealing with way more oppressive laws, mandates, and absolute insanity, really tyranny, that I went overseas and fought for three times. And I can tell you this, I'm so thankful that we're not dealing with that here in Troy. So I think that, I think that as citizens of the United States, citizens of Troy, Ohio, we can meet in the middle and be graceful and respectful towards each other and be able to move forward through this. Uh, and confidence that God's got us all and everything's going to work out in the end. Thank you so much.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Maureen Green. I reside at 5337 Fenwick Avenue in Cincinnati, Ohio. I drove an hour and 20 minutes here tonight to share with you my views on everything that's happening. I am a 27-year RN. I have experience in both home care and hospital pediatric and adult nursing. I am currently on disability since 2012 because of six autoimmune diseases. Asthma is one of them. Crohn's disease is the one that took me out of my profession. I battled for six years trying to find the right medical, uh, protocols to help control my symptoms to no avail and felt like I was slowly dying while trying to raise my two youngest children as a single mom, racing to graduate them both from high school before dying. My bargain with God was, if you allow me to survive long enough to graduate my youngest from high school, I will be okay with dying afterwards. That was in 2019. When that happened, I wondered, now what? And God answered me this year. I watched in January as COVID hit China, and I watched doctors from China coming on videos explaining how they were getting people out of ICUs off of ventilators and back home using high-dose IV vitamin C. I also started learning about zinc after going to vitamin shop and them asking what I was there for, and I said aloe gel for a ham sanitizer to make my own. And they said, "Oh, well, we have that." And I said, "What are you out of?" And they said zinc. Had never heard of it, didn't know what the purpose was, but I will tell you now I do. Because I have watched many numerous doctors come across my path, infusing me, I'm sure, through God's blessings, showing me ways that we can not only treat, but help to prevent becoming infected with COVID. Vitamin D, we aren't taught about that, and in our country, the low end of normal is 30. That's like getting a D minus on your report card. Who here is happy with a D minus of a vitamin D level? I'm not, but we aren't taught that, not even in nursing school or medical school. 30 is normal. There are vitamin D studies out there showing that people with COVID with low vitamin D levels are suffering more extreme cases of COVID, and they are the ones that are in the hospitals and on ventilators. But nobody is being told that. We are being told that the only options are remdesivir and going to the hospital, going home with the diagnosis of COVID and being told to take Tylenol, acetaminophen, or ibuprofen to lower your fever, which is the worst thing you can do because our body creates a fever to kill a heat-sensitive virus. When you take Tylenol, you actually allow the virus to thrive. I had a friend, I'm from New York originally. Her husband was sent home from the ER at the end of March. March 26th, Governor Cuomo took away prescriptive authority of hydroxychloroquine from all the doctors. He went to the ER, was sent home to take Tylenol every four to six for his fever. She found him dead in bed 15 minutes after a dose of Tylenol. These are the stories that I hear. I have 6,500-plus followers on Facebook. I have more than 2,000 friends on Facebook. God has brought these people to me. I help people understand how to help their body's immune system fight COVID. I hear from people across the country and have been helping them understand how to help their bodies. I don't treat. I don't overstep my bounds. I suggest. I give them information about America's frontline doctors, Dr. Eric Napooti, Dr. Zev Zelenko, people to go to to find out information from. I've taken care of my daughter who had COVID in February. I did not get sick. I have six autoimmune diseases. I have friends that have come to me locally and have said, "I have COVID. What do I do?" I have taken money out of my own pocket on disability and taken them zinc, quercetin, vitamin C, vitamin D, and helped them recover their health when they didn't know what to do because their doctors sent them home without any idea what to do. There are so many other things we can do. Finally, I'd like to let you know two more things. In 2009, a year after my Crohn's diagnosis, my sister was diagnosed with glioblastoma multiforme, brain cancer. My oldest sister sat in Good Sam Hospital in Cincinnati, Ohio, in the therapy unit. Her white blood cell count was so low that the day that I volunteered to help take care of her, I had to wear a mask when I went in to help her out. I was there for about 10 hours that day. Every time somebody came in to visit her, I took my mask off after going out of the room, threw it away, came back in with another mask on, and I did that throughout the day about three or four times. That night while sleeping, my body was trying to purge a demon. I had snot pouring out of my nose. I remember this because I remember waking up and wiping it away with tissues and passing back out again. I was drooling. I woke up in the morning to my daughter's phone call asking me how I was, what's going on, because she worked across the street with two autistic children at the house across the street. I told her what was going on. She said, "Come to the door and let me in." I said, "No, call the fire department and have them break down the door because I can't move." She refused to do that because it was a rental, and I crawled to the door, barely making it, and she took me to the ER. I was admitted for nine days. I ended up staying a little bit longer because after breathing treatment, I suffered 140, um, beats per minute heart rate, a reaction to the albuterol that they gave me. I cannot wear a mask respectfully. I am not going to go to a doctor to get a note to say that I cannot wear a mask. My word, being an adult as a nurse, should be enough to do that. I sit in my car for two hours when I go to the grocery store because I know what it's going to be like going into the grocery store to grocery shop, being looked at, being sneered at, wondering why I'm not wearing a mask, being asked if I want a mask. If I want a mask, I would bring a mask in with me. I see people, I see people hanging masks on their rearview mirrors, putting them in their pockets, taking them out to reuse them again. And with all due respect, this is dangerous practice. People do not know how to utilize these face devices, and they are using them improperly, and this is why people are getting sick. It's more useful to learn how to wear masks in thorough precautions and in regular precautions and in reverse precautions, like I had to do with my sister. Finally, I'd like to tell you about the 1918 flu second wave in October and November of 1918. There was a study done in 2005 by the NIH's Division NIAID, National Infectious, uh, National Institute for Allergy and Infectious Diseases. You might recognize the name because Dr. Anthony Fauci is in charge of that division. He was part of this study. In 1918, they wanted to know why most people died in 1918. You might assume it was because of the flu. You couldn't be farther from the truth. 97% to 98% of the people that died in 1918, October and November second wave, died from bacterial pneumonia of the lungs, from bacteria from the upper respiratory tract. They were mandated to wear masks too. Will we see the same thing happen here? That's my fear. I have sat in my house since March, knowing what I know, watching people die around me. My pastor at my church died yesterday morning at 11 o'clock because he was too proud to call me and ask me what I knew. Please stop sentencing other people to the same fate because they're too nervous. They're trying to please other people. They're trying not to make any waves. They're too afraid to not go in without a mask. There are so many people who should not be wearing masks. And my concern is that we are going to create the very things that we are afraid of. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor Oda, Council, and smiling members of the city. There is no science available which
Name and address, please.
Oh, he had a name, 920 Pinehurst. Come over if you like. There's no science available which proves that masks prevent COVID-19 transmission. There is much evidence supporting the fact that prolonged mask use actually helps precipitate the spread of the disease. The masks mesh and catch and hold the virus throughout an eight-hour day. And through breathing in and constant touching and adjusting of the mask, the virus is inhaled and transmission is completed. Masks prevent facial recognition of vital bodily language necessary, body language necessary for many personal and business interactions. My sister is deaf. She reads lips. She was six years old before we found out she was deaf, and she read lips very well. She wouldn't read yours. They also completely restrict the deaf from necessary communication and daily interaction. They hide smiles. There is an over 99% survival rate, as we heard already, from the COVID virus. For this, less than 3% tried to mask. The 100% of the people, this makes 0% sense. The popularly worn blue masks several of you are conveniently wearing contain two chemicals used to sanitize them when they're made. Both chemicals are cancer carcinogens, so breathe carefully. Thank you.
Amy Shannon, 1560 Windridge Place, Department D, Troy, Ohio. About to become the most popular person in this room, I suspect. So I'm here on behalf of over 208 residents who joined Facebook group with concerns about what's been going on. The goal of this is not to recall the mayor. The goal of this is to express the concerns that we have and have a conversation. So Mrs. Oda, I like you. I think you're a lovely person. I think you've been a very good mayor. You have faced a whole lot of things this year that have been unbelievable. So the concern is not a sign. The concern is not the sentiment that was on the sign, because I certainly agree with that sentiment. I don't like hearing that people who have medical exemptions or people who are unmasked are being bullied. I kind of understand how it feels because since I've been in this room today, I've heard multiple people make comments about me. Kind of interesting. We don't want to be bullied, but we'll bully others because of their choice. I have never gone to anyone and asked them why they weren't wearing a mask. I've never gone to anyone and suggested they needed to wear a mask. I assume there's some reason. We certainly don't believe that there's any reason to overrule any of the exceptions that are out there. Of course, there's exceptions. Of course, there's people that cannot wear a mask, and they should not be required to do so. However, the state does have a mandate, and I don't know if people realize, but a mandate is basically a law. I did some reading today. It said the constitution would disagree. However, having said that, it can be enforced. And with that, the question is, how far do we allow our public officials to go to disagree with what's being, being done? So we have those concerns about the sign that was placed because of the fraudulent information to give the opinion that it was from the ODH. There's multiple signs available from the ODH. They do discuss that there are exemptions. They do talk about other avenues. Being someone that's in healthcare, being somebody who knows I've been exposed repeatedly to COVID, I don't go into stores. I use those alternative means. I use the stores downtown delivery and/or picking up from them because I don't want to take the risk of giving it to someone else, knowing I'm exposed frequently. There are ways that we as a city can work on this together. I've watched in pickles, they've had four events for their residents that were always termed COVID-friendly. They've had parades, they've had fireworks, they've done things for their citizens to keep the morale up in ways that are considered safe. I don't know exactly what the line budget is for us with the Health Department, but I know that we pay them quite a bit of money. They're the experts on pandemics. They're the ones that are trained in how to deal with these things. And when we flat-out ignore them and ignore what they have to say and tell them that we don't care, not based on medical, but based on because it's what we want, you're endangering people, and that is a concern. Troy is currently the third highest-rated city in the state of Ohio. That means the rate of infection in this town is higher than Cincinnati, than Cleveland, than Toledo, than Dayton. There's a reason for that, and I think we need to take a step back and look at that. I personally am dealing with post-COVID syndrome. I got COVID in December of 2019. It's been 13 months of hell. So the death rate, it's fantastic that it's where it's at, but it's causing my heart to fail. So there's more to this. And in talking about all working together, yes, let's all work together. Let's be respectful all the way around. Thank you.
My name's Kim Oda. I live at 111 Little John Road. And I'm not going to talk about COVID statistics or masks because I think a lot of people have covered it much better than I would. But I'm going to talk about what I see as the heart of this issue that I'm mostly bothered by and that I understand and, and am bothered by that, that any leadership would take this stance. So I'm a newer resident, and I'm disgusted by what I hear is taking place over a sign and apparently wearing masks. I spent 18 years in a large city, Dallas, Texas, where I might have expected this to happen because you have a lot more people and you have a lot more going on. But to understand, to hear that, that it's possible that someone is, uh, people are harvesting voices to stand against any leader of this city is disappointing and disturbing. I personally question the character of anyone who would harvest this type of support and those who would, who are offering their voices. And I'm glad I heard from the person who went to the website or the Facebook page because I would never go there. But what she said about the type of posts there didn't surprise me at all because we all see that. And we're living in a time where that's more and more prevalent and more and more accepted, and that is disgusting. It's my opinion that these type of actions, harvesting support to recall a mayor over a sign and mask, are these, these type of actions are the ones taken by those on the fringe. Maybe 2%, I don't even know, but I know this, that that does not represent the majority of the population. Where this type of action is being seen more and more, I certainly expected a city such as Troy would stand above this and condemn this type of behavior. A people and a city that offers more grace and mercy, we should seek love over hate.
Hi, my name is Florency. 4114 Fletcher Road in Covington. Troy is where I do all my shopping. And when the pandemic started, everything was shut down. And I was thinking, why can I go to Walmart and buy my shirt? But I can't go downtown and buy clothes? That there's probably two people in the store. So, you want me to go to Walmart and stand in a line with hundreds of other people? But they're the threat. So, I want to tell you small businesses that are here, if you're ordered to shut down, all these people here, keep your stores open, we're coming to your store. On the mask, I know those are issues. The CDC on their website stated cloth masks that are used to slow the spread of COVID-19 have a little, little protection against wildfire smoke. They do not catch small particles found in wildfire smoke that can harm your health. Did you know? Smoke particles are larger than the COVID particles. I've got a couple things here. Israel and Sweden, two very, very different ways they've reacted. I don't know if you guys can see. We've got Israel in blue here. They're going into their third lockdown. Can you see that?
I see it.
Israel's orange, or I'm sorry, Sweden is orange. They've had zero.
Sweden looks better.
Let's come back to the U.S. Miami-Dade County in Florida. They put their mask mandate in right here. Is it working? What about Hawaii? Mask inside, mask outside. Is it working? But it's science, right? Ohio, let's come a little closer to home. July 23rd with our mask mandate, right there.
Yeah.
Right there.
Four times more daily cases.
Isn't working. Isn't working. I'll go into one more thing here. The CDC keeps changing their mind on everything. The flu guidelines in 2017. The use of face masks by well persons. CDC does not routinely recommend the use of face masks, but face masks by well persons in the home or other community settings as a means of avoiding infection during influenza pandemics. Are they lying now, or were they lying then?
They're lying now.
Flu guidelines, 2017. In a, in a high severity, which is a severe pandemic, I'm giving you worst-case scenario. We're not in that moment right now. In all settings, the CDC recommends voluntary home isolation of ill persons. Respiratory etiquette, hand hygiene, and routine cleaning of frequently touched surfaces and objects. In the settings of your residence, the CDC might recommend voluntary home quarantine of exposed household members in areas where novel influenza virus circulates. The CDC might recommend use of face masks by ill persons when crowded community settings cannot be avoided. Workplaces, CDC might recommend social distancing measures. Are they lying now, or are they lying then?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the time. Before, my name is Jeff Lauterback, 7740 Brownsville Drive, and I drove here from Centerville. And before I make my statement, I'd like to thank all the business people in the audience here in Troy who are honoring mask exemptions. I'm the founder and editor of AllOhio.com, which is a site partly to advocate for the reopening of Ohio. And make no mistake, Ohio is not open. And it's because the destructive mandates. But I won't go into that, because everyone here has really covered that. And done a great job. Well, why I'm here is to applaud and show support for Mayor Oda. Part of the reason AllOhio exists is to, I've created citizens groups. We have three citizens groups in Dayton, and are expanding them across the state. That's my goal. And it's to, this year more than any, we've found that it's important not only who your governor is, and who your state legislators are, but it's critical who your mayor, who your city council is, who your township trustees are, and who your school board is. You, everyone here sitting in front of me, you impact the lives, the daily lives of people in Troy. And it's really critical, Mayor Oda, she's demonstrated with courage, standing up, she's got, taken the time to get informed. She knew she would face backlash likely, but she had the courage to get informed. If you were all informed here, none of you would be wearing a mask. Reason why, there's no science behind it. Anyone who watches Governor Devine at 2:00. All you have to do is go on the Ohio Department of Health website, and I respectfully disagree with you about the health departments, because they're, they're part of the reason we're in this. So, all you have to do is check facts. When you're an elected official, you're responsible for standing up for the people. And I'm normally a calm person, I'm, and I'm normally succinct, or normally not succinct. So, I'll try to wrap up, because it makes me emotional just talking about it. And it, it just gives me a lot of pride to see elected officials like Mayor Oda. Thank you. Forgot something last time, and I know a lot of people here that agree with me on the mask, might not agree with me on this. But another reason I believe that Mike Devine is lying, the health department's lying about saving lives, when they're closing down businesses, they're closing down, you couldn't go see an eye doctor, you couldn't go see a dentist, you couldn't do that. But every abortion clinic in this, this state was openly killing innocent people. They don't care about life.
Or anyone else? Hey, I get paid salary, I could be here all night.
My name is Thomas Reed. I live at 4130 Linden Avenue in Dayton, Ohio. I'm a former resident, though, here in Miami County, but built over 40-some houses, in fact, that here in Miami County over the years, part of that founding group. So, I'm a giver. And, but it's not about me, it's about, right now, the, supporting the mayor here in her right. I do represent OhioStandsUp.org. I'm a member of that group. That group is now, have a, an issue, a federal lawsuit with Governor Devine. And that, once that, that's in the discovery stages, and they're, they're, it's ongoing. But when that happens here, that will come back here to reflect anybody else here who has actually violated the Constitution of the United States of America. So, that's going to be, I do have articles of cease and desist here that I could present here to the city of Troy for this, but I have legal team that'll be handling that matter. So, but really, the matter really boils down to two things. Good and evil. This is a God thing. And He's testing us. And the enemy is winning right now, and it's called the devil, or the evil, or whatever name you want to put on that. So, it's really about, it's all of us, really, if we could see the bigger picture, I mean, look up the Trilateral Commission sometime, and the Great Reset. I mean, these are just other things, that there's the bigger powers that would be in use to get us to fight each other. So, what I'm just saying is, look at the truth, look at the science, and then pray to God that we all will follow our heart, follow our intuition, and hopefully we will, we'll get through this situation. And God bless America.
My name is Jennifer Dunst, 801th 405th Drive. I actually come from Dayton, because I wanted to come here, because I want to let Troy know that there are people who drive here, or the businesses, and the families, and connections. Because Troy is bigger than just they are. They represent communities. And so, that is what the mayor, she represents the city. And I want to ask you, what kind of city will you be if you say she has to go, because she gave people the choice, whether they're medically disabled or choose constitutionally? Because that plague behind you represents the people who died for our freedoms, the right to choose for ourselves. We used to be a country to make those choices. Are we still that country? Are you still a city that is going to support a mayor who gives us that freedom of choice? Or are you going to tell her she needs to pack her bags? So, what kind of city is Troy going to become? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Meyer, and I'm at 3225 Peoples Road in Troy, Ohio. And I came here tonight to support the mayor. I just wanted to thank the mayor and all of the other city leaders for their courage in promoting activities that promote the mental health of the community, like the lighting of the Christmas tree. Well, this summer, I know Troy, Ohio, was one of the few communities that had anything open at all. And I know that Troy did their best, even if though, you know, it was limited to have activities and things for our community, because like someone else said, our mental health is very important. And I just wanted to thank all of you, I'm not sure who the decision-makers are, but I just thank you very much for doing that, and I encourage the city of Troy to do more things like that. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
I'll be a citizen. I'll take my badge off. Because I don't know the legalities of being able to speak as a citizen, but I am speaking as a citizen. Matt Simmons, 1700 Swes Road, Troy. I'm here to support you. One of the things we worked on as a community for several years was the heroin epidemic. And what is lost, you know, and what we have the ability to do here, and, you know, I'm not downing anybody here at council, but we have the opportunity in Troy to present hope. And I remember early on, when we had the Health Department come out to the Fire Department, because, you know, we didn't know what we didn't know early on, and we had a lot of firefighters, first responders, who were very fearful of to do their job. And, you know, one of the questions I asked the Health Department at that time was, you know, what about the recovery rate? What, you know, back in March, April, it's like, well, how many people recovered in their life? Why do you want to know that information? Well, because I want to know, because one of the things when we dealt with heroin was, you know, the major, the, the majority of your population, when we were dealing with heroin, just thought people were, you know, let's discard these people. Let's discard these people who are addicted to heroin. And they're the, the lower, they're the have-nots of the community. And so, you know, there is no hope for these individuals. There's no hope, because once you're addicted to heroin, you, you get to encounter the police department, and then eventually you get to have encounters with the fire department, EMS, because you've overdosed. And about the fourth or fifth time you overdose, you die. But along the path, you create a path of destruction. You become takers of the community services, you become users of the system. And a lot of these individuals had no hope. They had no hope, they had no people speaking up for them, except for their family members. And I remember being in a conversation with a high-up position person in the Health Department, and asked these people, because at the time, I didn't know what I didn't know. I was new to being the chief, but I said, you know, there's got to be hope for these individuals. Who are the individuals becoming free? And then that way, we can, you know, once we know the truth, then we can work backwards to the solution. And they said, it's the community that wraps arms around these individuals, mostly churches. I've never hidden my faith, and I'm not going to hide it today, but I'm a man who knows that if you don't have hope, you're going to live by fear. And so, now, fast forward to the pandemic, and, you know, my questions to the Health Department early on were, who are, what is the recovery rate? My people need to know who's recovered. That way, they know that they're not going to drop dead when they respond out to these people. And I, early on, got questioned, why do I want to know that? Then midsummer comes, and I started asking, what are the death totals? I'm not here to argue masks or to not argue masks, it's been beat to oblivion. But what I will say, in Miami County, we ended up with just under the amount of deaths, I requested information earlier today, I didn't receive it, but I believe we're either right at the death mark of what we were in 2019, or we're just under.
5% less.
5% less. And so, I don't want to discount, I'm not a, I'm not a denialist when it comes to COVID, but I'm also somebody that knows that your community has to have hope. And when you can have hope, you can move forward together, but you can still enjoy life. And at the same time, the reports are coming out that the overdoses are, you know, much higher than they were at any point in our history. Suicide data has not come out yet, but we have responded to younger populations of suicide. And I want to applaud not just the mayor, but everybody sitting up here at council for those events that we did do. In Miami County, we fared just as well. I know we didn't fare worse than a lot of other counties in Ohio that chose a strict lockdown. But I do want to say that if we forget the message of hope, we will never get through any of this. And if we start to not let, ask, people ask questions, then what have we become? And that's all this lady does. I'm in meetings with her, and, and she rubs people sometimes the wrong way, just because she asks questions. But when people can't answer those questions, then we don't rely on how we're going to respond to those people if they can't ask, if they can't answer simple questions. I just want to say, as a citizen, I'm proud to live here. And I'm proud to live in a community that says, you know what? If you don't want to come to these events, don't. If you want to come to these events, and you want to wear masks, I was at a tree line. And there were people that were wearing masks, and there were people who were not wearing masks. I never saw an incident that there was a disruption, but we knew that there was a reason for the season. And that we know that the joy that we get from doing these events where there's community input and community interaction, we're all better off, our health is better off. So, I just say, as we move forward, we do know now a lot more than what we didn't know in the beginning. So, that's the questions as elected officials that we just need to ask. And hopefully, we can get the answers to those, because there are studies upon studies upon studies that are coming out that do make sense. So, Mayor Oda, I'm here as a citizen of Troy to say thank you, and I will be loyal to you.
My name is Sue Oda. And I know Robin almost forever.
Please.
And I just wanted...
Please.
And I have a question for council. Do you want a mayor that has principles? Do you want a mayor that loves the city? Do you want a mayor who interacts with people everywhere she goes, letting them know how much she cares for them? Do you, or do you want a mayor who just sits in the chair, comes to council meetings, says yes all the time? Do you want a yes person? Then you don't want Robin. She is the most principled, loving, caring person that Troy can have. She came into office, and there was a tornado. She swept in like a tornado, and it hit Troy. And then what happened? COVID. She has taken her responsibility so seriously throughout this year with all that was going on. And I just want to say, Robin, I love you, you've done a great job, and this city should be proud to have you as their mayor.
Leaders of Troy, you need some numbers to make decisions with. Last year was a hard year. Can we have your name and address again, please? David Dessert, five twelve Canal, Troy, Ohio. You need some numbers, there's about nine hundred nursing homes and long-term facilities in the state of Ohio, nine hundred. We've lost about twenty-seven hundred people last year in those facilities, that's three per facility. Three per facility. Twenty-seven hundred's a big number, three per, per nursing home is not. Additionally, we've lost about seventy or eighty people per county, on average, different county to different numbers, you know. Most counties in Ohio lost more people to suicide than overdose. How many people are we losing because of fear and restrictions? How many kids? You know, number one cause of death in the ten to fourteen-year-old group is now suicide in Ohio. How many people have lost their second job that they paid their bills with? The government says there's five hundred thousand Ohio families awaiting eviction. What are the restrictions and fear causing? Do only COVID lives matter? We've gotta think of the bigger picture. As leaders, the medical aspect of COVID is not the only aspect. If you run a business, you can't just listen to operations, or marketing, or accounting, you've gotta think about the whole picture, you've gotta think about all the citizens. It's not really ruled by majority, we're supposed to protect everyone's rights. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm like a bad nightmare. So I hear a lot of people talking about...
Can I have your name and address?
I'm sorry, Corin Green, five three three seven Fenwick Avenue, Cincinnati, Ohio. I hear a lot of people talking about masks, first of all, I would be honored to have a mayor who would stand up for everybody's rights down in Cincinnati. It's a little scary sometimes trying to go to different places, I have friends that tried to shop together because of their fear of going to stores. On Christmas Eve, I was discriminated against when I got up to the cash register at Kohl's, because, and I had been warned about this cashier. I'd been told, don't go to her, but God had her open up right in front of me, and her light went off and said, go to her, and I was like, okay, what are you doing? And went to her, and she moved me over to another cashier, and it was because I didn't have a mask on, I was the only one without a mask on. So I hear a lot of this being discussed, but I don't hear what we can do. What can we do to help calm people's fears? God laid on my heart about a year ago, hope, healing, and wellness. And the H in hope is two crosses side by side. I would like to offer, I'm not gonna call it my expertise, but my knowledge, to the city of Troy, whatever help it would be, I am in Cincinnati, but my only dream is to help bring people out of fear and into hope and into empowerment because of education and awareness and understanding of that they're not at the mercy of this, that there aren't things that they can do, and there are reasons why their bodies are reacting the way they are to pathogens and viruses and bacteria. So I'm going to leave my business cards right here, if anybody would like to use them, or call me, or email me, or anything, please feel free to reach out, I'm not expecting or anticipating anything, but the offer is there, because we all deserve hope. And, and that's what I hope I can bring to the city of Troy. Thank you, and thank you.
Good evening, my name's Joe Overholzer, twenty-nine twenty-four Acorn Drive, Kedron, Ohio. And I just drove up here today, so I heard your, your mayor Troy was respecting people who could not wear a mask for health reasons and whatnot. And I thought that was great, and come up here and, and support that. I think it's kind of ridiculous that it's even, that's even a question, but we got, I mean, what, I have not seen, right, I don't know how much stuff on the issue, I've not seen anything that suggests that masks are even helpful for the general population to wear. And on top of that, there's much evidence that it's harmful. And so, that was ridiculous, we have an issue, we got people getting mad at people, and scared and angry over this, because we had people saying we should wear a mask, without the, without being able to provide any real evidence that this makes sense. And so now, we're here doing this, we're here doing this, but I think this is where, this is where we have to defeat it, it's here at the local level, this is where we have to get some common sense back for our society. So I'm obviously not getting it at the state level in Ohio anyway, like we are a few states not getting it, you know, from our health departments. So the only thing, one of the, brings people's attention is there's something called the Great Barrington Declaration. Probably nobody's, probably very few of anybody's heard of it, because we got media censorship's another issue. But anyway, Great Barrington Declaration, I suggest everybody research that, go Google it, it's not been, they completely washed off the face of the earth yet. Anyway, basically, generally, it's a bunch of experts in the medical profession from all over the world, all kinds of different political leanings got together, and made some common sense recommendations on how to fight this pandemic. And it's nothing like, nothing like what we're doing, and maybe ask ourselves, why is, why is none of our leadership looking at this common sense recommendation from experts from around the world? So yeah.
Hi, I'm Tamara Bernard Ganger, nine twenty-two Branford Road, Troy, Ohio. I just snapped my mask accidentally. You guys all know who know me, though, I do not do this well here, so this is hard for me. But I tell you one thing I want to say about Mayor Oda, the very first council meeting I ever came to, I was literally trying to hide behind someone, and she goes, Tamara, I see you back there, and how do you feel about this? And it was about a different levy that was going on at the time. I respect how Robin cares about the big picture, and you have my support, Robin, and I am so proud to call you the mayor of my community, my town.
My name's David Thomason, I'm the pastor at Troy Baptist Church, just down the road.
Please.
The address is six nine one East Staunton Road. You know, I, I don't know, honestly, who's here, who's for or against the mayor. At this point, I'm not all that concerned about it, I'm for her, it's my choice to be for her, and really, that's the, that's the word that I think we should focus on is choice. You know, you are here because somebody made the choice to put you here. She's the mayor because somebody made a choice to put her there. That's one of the great liberties in America that we are very concerned about, and we have been, and it's been much talked about it all year. And that's, and that's to continue the America where we have a choice. When I see it, I mean, I'm a pastor, I can't make anybody do anything. If I could make people come to church, I guess I would, but, but that's not gonna happen. It's, as a pastor, you just, it's a matter of, okay, here it is, here's the truth of God's word, and what you do with it, it's your business, and it's up to you, it's a choice, God doesn't force himself on anybody. You have to choose him. He does, he doesn't dominate people against their will, and it's like, I present the Death Barrel Resurrection of Jesus Christ every week, but it's up to an individual to believe that message. You know, I believe in Mayor Odom, from what I understand, was just simply leaving some choice to the individual. And really, that's what we hope to keep in America, is the ability to choose. I'd like to be able to choose you and vote for you, if, if you and I agree on the same things, I'd like to have that choice to vote for you. But at the same time, if somebody else was running and we didn't have the same platform, I'd like to have the, the freedom to choose. And I appreciate just the fact that, from what I hear, I think that's pretty much about what that sums up to be, was, you've got a choice. And I'm not, I don't care about the logo on the bottom of the sign, and nobody, I don't really think the average person would even read it that close anyway. And, but, we have a great city here, and I'm gonna tell you, you all have done a great job. I've committed our city council on many occasions for what they've done, there's been a lot of progress made, there's been a lot of great things that take place in our city. I'm, I'm proud to be the pastor at Troy Baptist Church. I love the community, I love our church, they made a choice five and a half years ago. They had a choice to either accept me and my family, to, to move here and to lead that ministry, it was their choice. And I'm glad they made the choice. I did my research on Troy, I thought that'd be a great place to raise a family, it'd be a great place to live. And I've got two children, I've got a teenage daughter, I've got a, I've got an elementary age son, and I've, I've been in the ministry full-time for twenty-five years since finishing college, and I love it here. My wife would tell you, of all the places we've lived, she'd say Troy's the favorite place that we've ever lived. And I commend you for all the many wonderful things that's going on, but at the, but at the end of the day, we really need to focus on giving people a choice and preserving that right. You know, the government doesn't guarantee happiness, but it does guarantee the liberty to pursue happiness. I would love to see this pandemic gone. My family had COVID, many people had COVID, we did everything imaginable to try to prevent it, and I'm all for the natural stuff, we took the vitamin C and the D, and their oil of oregano, and zinc, and all the rest of it. And I'm, I mean, I'm surprised it hasn't changed my skin color, thinking so much of it. But at the same time, I mean, I, I'm thankful that we can come here, and by the way, folks, this is a blessing too, we have a choice to come to. I wonder, and some of you question, that in four years from now, will we still have the freedom to choose? I'm not, don't, don't label me as a conspirator. I'm just saying that having a choice is one of the great benefits of being an American, it's one of the great benefits of living in this area, and we've, obviously, the people have made some pretty good choices in our area, because it's a fine place to live. And sure, I'm thankful for those that are trying to go after heroin and meth and all the rest of it, and try to help everybody, and no doubt, we need to do whatever we can to help mankind. I think everybody ought to have a goal in their life. Go do something to help somebody else. I just tell my wife this afternoon, I said, the happiest people on earth are people that are giving their life to help somebody else in some way. And I believe that that really rests in the heart of you. I mean, I'm sure you could probably think of a lot better things to do than just sit around here tonight, but you are concerned, and you're, you're in that position because you believe that there's some things that you can add to this, this community. And I believe that what we have can add to this community. But again, hey, I'm a pastor, it's a choice for them, I present it, they're open to come, they're free to listen, but the choice is theirs. And I just, I'm thankful that we have a religious liberty in America. But I'm thankful that we have liberty in our area as well to make decisions. And so for Mayor Oda, who I don't know very well, I think we've met and talked one time, but I appreciate what you're doing, I appreciate the way you've handled yourself, and I'm sure that it's, it's difficult working in these positions, and all of you, I'm sure that's not the easiest thing in life to do, neither is being a pastor, and it's not the easiest thing in the world to do. And, but I'll tell you this, it's well worth it, and there's always more blessings than there are burdens. And I hope you all realize that too, even in what you're doing, there's, I guarantee there's more good than it is bad, even in what you're trying to accomplish, so thank you so much.
Hello, my name's Heather Tapplet, I live at one one zero four four Grow Law Road in Midway. I wasn't planning on speaking, but I just felt like I needed to. I want to start by thanking you for giving people the opportunity to choose whether they can or cannot wear a mask. About six years ago, I had some health problems, I began researching deeply my issues, I fell into the health freedom movement. And one of my fears with the masks is, you know, this is a medical device, where do we go from here? You're forcing a mask on me, not as a doctor. You're gonna force a medication on me, not as a doctor. Where does it end? We enjoy coming to Troy, we actually, it's one of the only places we come to eat, because there's places we can go, we don't have to see people in masks psychologically, it really bothers me to see people in masks, because I know what I know, I know it's not safe, I know the chemicals you're breathing in are not good for you. It's not good for our children's development, I can't hear, I read lips regularly, it's very unnerving to me when I go somewhere. There's plexiglass and a mask, because sometimes people wear two masks. I don't know what's going on, I can't tell you. Sometimes I respond to the person behind me, because I can hear them, but I can't hear the girl through the plexiglass. I've talked to cashiers in stores who have told me that they have mask exemptions, not in Troy, and that they've had customers attack them through the plexiglass because they're not wearing a mask. It's, it's not okay, and it, it's a very powerful thing that you come forward for your people the way you have. And I want to let you know that we started visiting a restaurant here in Troy because it's a healthy choice, and I like that, but we've continued visiting, and we've visited it probably three, four, or five times as much as what we would have, because it is a little further for us to come to, because of the fact that you all do allow the exemption. And I want to thank you for that, I want to thank you for giving people the opportunity to have the health freedom that they deserve, because again, where does it go from here? Thank you.
We've heard from twenty-one residents. Anyone else?
Twenty-two is my favorite number, so I'm sorry. My name is Lindsay Scalise Taylor, I live at four four five five East Castown Clark Road in Castown. Okay, so I prayed to God on the way here to keep my mouth shut. Can you guys hear me back there? Okay, so I came here to support Robin, Mayor Oda, thank you so much for being a pillar of strength for everybody in this room, but I am a small business owner. I have lived in Troy my entire life, I co-own a small business with my sister, and I have kind of a weird perception with everything going on, because my dad is in the hospital with COVID on a ventilator. He's been on a ventilator since December nineteenth, and he's not doing well. But I am not a masker, and I'm gonna tell you right now, I love my dad. And I'm going to tell you right now, I love my dad, but he watches mainstream media. And he lives in fear. My dad was the most cautious, careful, just safest person I had ever met. He wore a mask in his house. He took his temperature every morning with no symptoms. My dad lived in fear. Where is he now? On a ventilator. People that don't wear masks are good, right? So I just, I came here to say thank you for supporting us. I think you're awesome. You have been such a voice for us people that don't have a voice. And as a small business owner, the pandemic and the quarantine and the shutdown has been awful. And I'm going to read everything that came to my, to me back in November. I'm, I was kind of an internet sensation there for a hot second. I had a post that went viral and I had to take it down because people got upset. Okay. So to clarify, when the government discusses shutting down businesses again, what they really mean to say is small business. Kroger, Walmart, and every other large corporation and chain remains open for essential business. This is expletive. For those of you that feel like getting a haircut isn't essential, I'm going to tell you all right now that providing for my family is essential, period. And ask anyone suffering from mental health or depression, a haircut with a human touch and a warm smile can do wonders for their wellbeing. And I'm also going to come out and say how I have seen a noticeable cognitive and physical decline in some of my customers that haven't talked to or seen anyone in months. Sheltering away from their loved ones and living fearfully is really, really heartbreaking. I know the virus is real and people have died and it's tragic, like my dad, right? But millions of people have gotten it and they've also survived. Our small business has seven independent contractors. And as licensed professionals, we all have been educated on, trained to handle all sanitation, sterilization, and disinfection guidelines. We clean our workspace because we service the public. The majority of cosmetologists have been doing this their entire career. This is not new. If you want to shut down businesses, then shut down all businesses. Not just the little guys, the mom and pop shops, the backbone of our communities. Our business is safer than walking into a grocery store or a gas station. So how is closing my shop going to help stop the spread? All you're doing is permanently closing small businesses and destroying communities, which is not good for anyone. I was promised all kinds of compensation and help the last time everyone was told to shut down. Do you know what I actually received when I needed help? Nothing. The only thing I walked away with was a deep depression, crippling anxiety, homeschooling our kids, and two months without pay. That's almost three times as long as what my maternity leave was. I know that I'm not the only small business owner or independent contractor that shares this experience, even though we were required to pay 100% of our company's overhead while we were shut down. If you don't have a revenue, how do you handle monthly expenses? Take on more loans and fight for grants when all we want to do is work? I'm very curious how other small businesses are supposed to survive when they're shut down. And I'm praying for my West Coast and New York friends because they are not okay. When everything shuts down, that's when we all do, but not without a fight. And just in case we haven't met, I'm Italian, I'm a mom, I'm smart, I love America and I love my freedom. And I'm walking the arms of other local small business owners and guess what? We're over it.
Anyone else?
Mr. President?
Mr. Phillips?
I, I just gotten a little bit from the tone that there's some expectation that perhaps council was going to do something. Council didn't start this. This was, your folks being here was a Facebook thing that drove this conversation. It wasn't anything that we have done legislatively. We're not anticipating that I know of anything legislatively. We're not, we're not changing anything. And I know a lot of us up here on this table have had the same conversations with our friends and, and other folks up here about the same things with what Mr. Simmons said. The, the concerns of the health issues, the depression, the suicide rate, the drug rate as a retired law enforcement officer, that was the first concern of my mind with a lockdown of our healthy population. You don't quarantine a healthy population. Nothing is, to my knowledge, is going to occur with council up here, but this conversation again was started because of a Facebook thing. And that's where the conversation needs to happen in a very gracious, thank you Reverend, your pastor, being Southern Baptist. You need to have it in that way. So please have that grace with folks that do or do not have masks on. I live in a divided house, just like Michigan and Buckeyes, over the mask issue. So I have to walk a line there too. So please, please bear that in mind when you're, when you're speaking to each other. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.